The May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I will be asking Melissa Crossway to do the pledge of allegiance, please. And I will ask Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine, Mayor Protem Olivia Valentine to do the invocation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Could everyone please stand? Put your hand over your heart and say with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Crossway. Mayor Protem? Oh, can you unzoom? Can you unmute? I'm sorry.
May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings that you have granted this city and all of the leaders that are pledged to do the very best they can to make the city a better place. Give us the wisdom and knowledge and dedication to make the very best decisions we can for the benefit of the residents and the, um, and, and, and for the benefit of the, for the, um, residents and the, uh, the employees of the city of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Amen. Okay, thank you. Thank you to you both. Mayor Protem has a presentation on the agenda, recognition of Tanya Muhammad. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Um, is she here?
No.
Oh, she's not? Oh.
We'll make, we'll make the necessary accommodation if she comes earlier enough in the meeting. Is that okay?
So we'll wait then?
Or unless you wanted to, unless this-
Well, we have a video as well as a certificate of recognition.
Um, so would you like to proceed without interference? Well, if, if, if you have a video and certificate, we might as well go ahead with it right now because we can't, uh, deviate me, uh, drastically in the meeting. Would you like to proceed?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, go ahead.
Eric, can you go ahead and show the video, please?
A local woman who has been a business owner in Hawthorne for decades is now putting all her savvy industry wisdom and experience into one space for those wanting to start up their own venture. Reporter Lauren McKay spoke with her about her journey.
Was working at the bank, went on my train leave, didn't want to go back to the bank, and I was just like, I gotta do something different.
Doing something different and economical for she and her kids in her early twenties.
I was actually married at the time, um, I was twenty-three, young. One day, my ex-husband left five dollars on the dresser. He left five dollars on that dresser and was like, okay, I'll be back. He went to work and left me with three children, pregnant with five dollars. That was my motivation. Right there.
Knowing she would never want that feeling of being reliant on anyone ever again, she was determined to succeed, starting up her very own child daycare service.
It was the easiest thing that I had ever done. It was like, this is what I was supposed to be doing. The need for daycare is really, really great. So I get calls all day, every day. All day, every day, because there's so many children, especially in our city, that need care.
That was nearly thirty years ago, enough time for her to build a solid framework and name for herself within the community.
So talk to me about what, what, if I'm a child and I'm coming to your daycare, what do I expect? Um, what do you think sets your daycare apart?
First of all, there's only one Ms. Tanya. What I am known for is getting your child ready to go to kindergarten. It's all about creating memorable experiences for the children.
She does that by incorporating things like yoga and meditation for the kids to start their mornings with positive affirmations. Also gardening, special activities for playtime, and even eating healthy homemade snacks.
It's easy for them to pick up. It's teaching them eye-hand coordination, as well as how to feed themselves. When they come to me, you're, you're just getting the full package. I'm gonna feed them well. We have pretty much like a vegetarian diet here for the children. I cook for them. Nothing is processed. It's always fresh fruit for them.
But things aren't always perfect. She has dozens of stories of what starting and maintaining a daycare is actually like, and now is sharing them with others in her new book, Daycare Chronicles One-O-One.
Nobody prepares you for the day-to-day of things that happen in daycare. So it's actually true stories, but just a funny, comical way of just, just expressing what really happens in daycare.
The goal, for anyone interested in starting up one, to know they're not alone, and they can make it through even the toughest of days.
I say that for someone that is thinking about it, do it. Just do it.
While she's made adjustments to some of her daycare tactics due to COVID, she says the key to success comes from simply staying consistent. For HCTV, I'm Laura McKay.
If you have more questions for Tanya about the book, or you'd like to utilize her childcare services, head over to her website at www-DaycareChronicles101.com.
And I have a certificate of recognitions, which I would like to read. In recognition of your achievements, both as a humanitarian and educator in the city of Hawthorne, we commend your dedication to the early development of young children through your Little Critters Twenty-four Hour Family Daycare Center, which has operated for thirty years, creating a safe, memorable environment for children, giving them a wonderful head start, preparing them for future success. Because of your efforts, our preschoolers are learning important life skills, such as developing their own independence and healthy eating habits. We are extremely proud to have you as part of our community. Your efforts are much appreciated, and it's presented this twenty-fifth day of May two thousand twenty-one to Tanya Muhammad. And we, we, um, we will make sure that this gets, uh, sent to her. Thank you, um, thank you all.
It's a very great story. I'm really excited and-
Isn't it a wonderful story?
We're proud of her being in our community and being able to get through those difficult moments and, and teaching children how to be responsible at an early age.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we need to correct the record and go back to doing an official verbal roll call, and that is done to be able to be compliant with the executive orders that all roll calls must be done orally. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Uh, by Mayor Protem, uh, Valentine?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Thank you. I'd also like to call, um, City Treasurer Gregory Fallon.
Present.
Councilmember, what about Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, I apologize. I'm sure that, uh, Councilmember Patterson, thank you so much, sir. I apologize for that.
I am here.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and City Clerk Jimenez?
I'm here.
Thank you so very much. And moving forward, when we do the roll call, every single council member will be called, and that is to be in compliance. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And if your office could interject right at the beginning, you know, before we kind of move on.
I did only get the presentation had started, so I do apologize for that.
Okay, please. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Yes, uh, during oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member.
Any communications, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, we have four.
Four? Okay, let's get started.
Okay. Ms. Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, Ms. Williams, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers and the city of Hawthorne. Lethal Williams here. Um, the city, uh, had some concerns and been speaking about, um, if the jets that fly from our airport had a different flight pattern from the other airplanes. Because you've got two jets, even the just a person identified one plainly, a white jet and a, uh, jet with blue belly that's blue under the bottom of it. I'm quite sure that's what he, uh, uh, was talking about. But, uh, those two jets, they do not fly the, uh, airport flight pattern, never. Because he said they fly over their home, and he lives down Broadway where not too long ago, uh, little aircraft flew into, uh, their property over that way. So we were just wondering if the, uh, governing bodies could, uh, bring that up to the airport and even maybe charge a fine at this point, because it's been a very long time for them not to be flying, uh, the flight pattern that's there for them. And another thing on item eighteen for the vendors, the vendors, come on now. These governing bodies, it's a lot of ethnicities out there that know that when the sun go down or anything like that, wherever you're from, Mexico, Brazil, Cuba, especially Jamaica with jerk chicken and rough fish, you wanna go to your favorite vendor, and you know when the food is good, and yes, you take a risk. You know when the food is good, when the line is low. Come on now, can't wait to go to Mexico when this border open up and go to my favorite vendor. But bringing a coaster home, it is truly a health issue, but it is what it is. And for our, uh, orange guy that buy the bag of oranges from and peanuts, those wonderful peanuts and the pineapple from, I wonder if that could go up under the issue that was on the agenda not too long ago, uh, where we are letting the guys with elotes and, uh, uh, push carts that's around after the school, because those elotes are a good thing in between the evening dinner. If that could be still allowed, I mean, don't confiscate it. This is how people put their kids through school and buy school material. It's just something in their nature. There's nowhere you can go when that evening taco stand, your favorite one hits the street. So, um, I wonder if we could even designate a spot for them sometime on, on a Thursday or Friday evening. Just a lot for them to come out with their flag, their international flag, because who don't love a good taco or some nice warm jerk chicken? So just something to think about, because that is in their nature. And thank you for my time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. You have a good night.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. City Manager, can you refer her information about the airport to Alan Lund, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Ms. Castillo?
Oh, there she is.
Ms., you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Atisa Castillo. I live in the city of Hawthorne. I also happen to be a corporate recruiter, and my comment was in regards to the funds allocated from the city to pay for a search firm, um, for the city attorney. I believe that those funds should actually be allocated to other projects. Um, in the human resources department, you do have a recruiting team. Their job is to recruit, and that's something that should be done internally. Interview question, um, postings, it is no different than what system is probably used to. A lot of the platforms that are used right now are the same platforms that we at a search firm use. So I think those funds should actually be used for public funding for streets and the safety of the city of Hawthorne. And that is my commentary.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. You have a good night.
Um, if you can enter those into the record and, uh, human resources is listening and we can go ahead. To the next item, please. To the next individual, sorry.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Royster. Mr. Royster, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, if you could please turn down, uh, your sound in the background. Um, you have three, three minutes, sir.
Okay, listen in and we can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah. All right, I'm a citizen of Hawthorne. As of two years, um, I'm happy that I post, that, that I post, I proposed on Facebook, captured, um, a couple of people's attention, who are also citizens of Hawthorne. I brought up that I wish the city had tree-lined streets, landscaping, and more pedestrian-friendly downtown area, which consists of cafes, um, some boutiques, and most importantly, um, address the eyesore of a site Hawthorne Plaza Mall on Hawthorne Boulevard. Um, I suggested to turn the mall into a mixed-use of apartments, um, outlet stores, uh, think of something like Ontario Meals, but on a smaller scale, and maybe a food hall like Grand Central Market with a mixture of chains and local mom and pop restaurants. And I also said, uh, for the facts, we citizens of Hawthorne are so close to destinations of SpaceX, LAX, and the new SoFi Stadium and the beaches, we deserve to have businesses, just like Redondo Beach and, um, the other beach cities. Um, it's time to make the city more visually appealing and welcoming. Um, I currently live walking distance from the old Hawthorne Plaza Mall and City Hall. And I included some pictures in my current email that you can, guys can, um, view later. Um, I just posted a picture, um, of the rail, of the rail, of the railway, and I suggested, um, installing landscaping and maybe fence it off and do like, um, a bypass, a deschery, um, uh, walkway to connect, um, SpaceX, um, to the mall, to the old mall, and also maybe run all the way to the beach. Just, just put it to the, of Hawthorne. That's just some ideas for, that I suggested, and I'm Stephen Royster.
Thank you, Mr. Royster. You have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Um, next, and we did receive your, I, I received, um, my, anybody did not receive his communication? Okay, I believe everyone received your communication. Thank you. Go ahead. Next item, please. Next individual.
So Nick, yeah, we have the last caller right now?
All right. Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
Uh, this is regarding the, uh, once, the one-twentieth drift between Prairie and Crenshaw Boulevards. Um, you guys recently did a speed and, uh, I guess the volume, uh, survey. And, uh, it's basically inaccurate. You guys had, uh, the test uh, being done when there was, uh, construction going on, so there was a reduced speed limit, and there was a, uh, there was actually a motor officer, a motorcycle cop that was there, um, basically issuing tickets. So people were slowing down already. It was reduced to two lanes. And, uh, that's basically an inaccurate, um, survey you guys did. Um, I noticed that the, the guy who set up the, the test, since it was under construction, they, he only, um, monitored three lanes, and it's technically four lanes. And it, I believe it's just not enough time to, well, first off, it was, it was placed in incorrect time, um, since the construction was there. So that's number one. Number two, it was not enough time. Um, number three, all the lanes weren't, uh, all the lanes weren't documented or, you know, calculated. So, uh, I think you guys need to do that survey again. Um, I have a couple of suggestions I would love to have into that street if it would be possible. Um, I know you guys need, so I'm looking at El Segundo Boulevard. El Segundo Boulevard has like six lights, white lights between Prairie and Crenshaw. Uh, one-twentieth street has basically one light that you guys recently, um, installed a couple of years ago. Um, and that light only functions and changes when a car approaches. You guys need to either make that a stop sign, an automatic stop sign, so that everyone needs to stop, or it needs to be a, a random, which at whatever time switches over to red, or you guys need to install another light on Corn Blume and make that a stop sign, an automatic stop sign, or I know you guys have that, um, the bike lane over, over at the canal, and you guys have a bike lane on, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard. It'd be a great idea, because the connect, I'm gonna have a bicyclist, it'd be a great idea, you guys would actually make a dedicated bike lane. Maybe reduce one-twentieth street to a, uh, two lanes, a two-lane, uh, inner, uh, highway, or not highway, but street. Make a dedicated parking for the residents there, since there's no parking there. We have nowhere to park. Um, it's battle every night when they come home to try to find somewhere to park. We can't park in the airport section. They get mad at us. Um, it'd be great if you guys could, if it would be a two-lane, a dedicated bike lane and a dedicated, um, parking lane.
Mr. Vargre, you have fifteen seconds.
Maybe like they did in Hermosa of a one-ninetieth or one-ninetieth street, they have a dedicated lane for that. Or maybe like on Prairie and Torrance, where you have a section that's, you know, cordoned off, so that you can park, you have to go into that area. Um, it's very dangerous on one-twentieth street. You got, I mean, they're driving-
Mr. Vargre, yeah, your time is up.
All right, well, thank you for your, uh, thanks for the time.
Thank you so much, sir. You have a good night.
Mr. Interim City Manager, has that traffic study on one-twentieth been completed, or is it still in progress?
It's still in progress, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so for the residents that live along that street, it's not completed? That was just one, uh, one piece of data for the whole study, so just letting you know not to worry. It's gonna be a complete study. Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager.
That's the end of public comments.
Okay, no further communications? Okay, I'll declare oral communications closed. So order. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval.
Go ahead.
Item six, approval of waiver of full readings, of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eight-two-seven-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, and setting Tuesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. as the time and date of a public hearing. Item twelve, resolution number eight-two-seven-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, funded by S B one, the Road and Repair Accountability Act of twenty seventeen, for adoption.
I move-
To approve.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number nine, please, sir.
Okay. Uh, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Hawthorne Municipal Airport Rehabilitation of Taxiways Project, city project number twenty-one through zero-two. Uh, A I P project number three dash zero-six dash zero-one, zero-one dash zero-one-nine dash two-zero-two-one. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication File, there were two bids received. All were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. Shaun in, two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Excel paving, one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Quick discussion, uh, Alan Leo?
To the chair.
Yeah, Alan Leon? Or Alan, hi. So the taxiways, uh, that wouldn't be the main runway. That would just be the side of taxiways where the planes are going up and down to get from the runway to their, uh, hangars or to their taxi, to their parking positions, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that was it. Um, Councilmember Reyes English?
Uh, Mayor, I'm going through my agenda booklet, and I don't even have item nine in my booklet. All the tabs are empty. It starts with item eleven.
City Clerk's office?
Diana's checking that right now, as we speak.
Okay. Let's give it a, let's give it a minute, so we can see what's going on.
Mayor Vargas, are you also missing it? We just want to make sure if it's-
I'm missing item nine from my booklet, as well as ten.
Okay. I'll talk to Diana. The chair?
Nine.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, in my book, I have it as listed as, uh, item number twelve.
Okay. All right, just a moment. Let me just double-check something here.
I don't, I don't have it at all.
The bids aren't under twelve. This just discusses-
There isn't, no, you, that's, there's nothing under item twelve?
Item twelve is just resolution eighty-two seventy-seven that we just did. The one that we're looking for is item number nine that speaks to the, the department's, um, bidder, the bidder, the bids for the, what is it? The airport rehab.
Okay, I will, um, I would like to make a motion to table this towards the end of the meeting, and then we can pull it up.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't recall in the past, uh, seeing any of those bits, you know, a, a, a-
Okay, okay, that is a good point. Uh, where would we have the actual?
We never have something there.
We don't get the whole B, so we get an itemized list of what the, the numbers are for each bidder.
It's not in our book.
It's just a list, and then that list is be, it always, uh, read, uh, read by the city clerk. I, we never see, I never saw in my, uh, and all this year I've been there, and I see the, the bids put on, on the, on the agenda packet.
Yeah, but we don't have the list in our packet either.
Okay, uh, Mr. Interim, okay, interim city attorney, along with, uh, our city clerk, or, you know, Ms. Avalos, what is, what, what do we have here? Are we, are we in compliance? If we go ahead and vote for this, or are we not in compliance?
We would not be in compliance, because it is not listed, uh, with those bid amounts on the actual agenda. It is listed in terms of substantial information for the public to know that we will be reading the bids. However, unfortunately, I do, I am new to the process, so I'm still trying to learn the process. And I don't see that it's listed here as item eight, and Mr. Patterson is correct. It is on there for you. It is not, however, on the actual agenda to the public.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, and, and we have to remember that we don't vote on those bids. We refer them to the staff with recommendation instead.
Okay, so, uh, um, actually, you're correct. So considering that, no, thank you, Councilmember Montero, considering what was just stated, Mr. Interim City Attorney and Ms. Avalos, uh, would we be in compliance? Just going ahead, making the motion to refer. We're not doing anything with this stuff, so we're just referring it.
This is out of, uh, abundance of caution, why don't we table this item for now? We could bring it back up for the next meeting.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Kim.
Okay, that's fine. All it is is a simple, we have the numbers here, but, um, I just want to be very careful. Uh, you know-
Mr. Mayor, you need to ask Alan if, 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 if we did, if we don't do nothing, it may, not jeopardize any grants or any starting of the process.
Alan, very good question. Alan?
Yes, well, we, we can, um, bring it back up on the next city council meeting. Now, there will be no issue.
Also, um, so Alan, make sure that, uh, on your end, that you make sure that it gets inserted into our book, so that we don't run into a situation like that. So, um, if we did it different before, we need to do it, uh, the appropriate way now. Okay?
We'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna be revising the process, and so in, in that regard, you know, I will support, um, the directors in making sure that we're compliant. I will let you know that the law does indicate that the compliance should be when the actual contract is awarded. The bid process itself is already made available to the public, and we do have a bid process that the city utilizes, which is completely fully compliant. And so to that regard, I will say that we follow that process. In terms of the actual bidding itself, it is just, uh, it is more than anything a process that you've done, but it is not necessarily needed. It is needed, however, to be accurate when we actually award that bid, and that definitely comes to the city council. And so at that point, you get an opportunity to also ask questions regarding and pertaining to that bid. We're happy to forward any bids that come in as the process moves forward, but know that we are going to be revising some of these processes to streamline the process itself in general. So I do appreciate that opportunity to support.
This item's gonna be tabled to the next meeting anyways, just to make sure, uh, uh, unless you're, go ahead, go ahead.
Mayor, what I'm referencing is, I do not have the agenda bill item.
Exactly, in the book.
In the book, so that, that, that's, that, that's all, that's what it is in a nutshell. I wanted to be able to review and read the agenda bill. That's it.
No, you're right, and that's what we're questioning here, too, in regards to making sure we're in compliance by having everything in our book.
And that-
And, uh, and, uh, add it to the agenda as a link, so that residents can see what paper we, we would be seeing, okay? And uh, and uh add it to the agenda as a link, so that residents can see what paper we, we would be seeing, okay?
Yeah, and all those items need to go to the city clerk's office, not, not Alan to us, but Alan to the city clerk's office.
Yes, exactly, Alan, you know, yeah, that's, that's what we're, that's what we meant, right?
Alright, thanks.
Okay, so it's been tabled to the next meeting. Uh next, we have general matters, item number sixteen, please. Can you please read it, Mister City Clerk?
Yes, uh recommendation, motion, staff recommends. That the city council authorize the city manager to sign contact, contracts with H D I. Econ Solutions of administering the COVID nineteen relief and economic recovery program.
I make a motion.
Second, but I'd like to, I'd like to uh ask um the interim city manager to explain the um, the, the program. The, the request.
Okay, we'll, we'll accommodate you for the discussion. Um who made the second, was that?
I did.
Was that you? Okay. Alright, I made, I made the motion, I think, and uh.
Yes.
You made the second, go ahead. Discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protemp, City Council. Uh this is a great opportunity that the, the federal government's given us a author. Uh we're set to receive a little over thirty three million dollars into, into payments. And with that amount of money, we wanna make sure that we serve the public and we uh find it, are found to sound with that money. Uh we're asking for, to give me approval to enter into agreement with H D L to administer the spending of that money from the federal government.
Okay.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Savan, City Manager, um do you have recommendations on how that funding, uh those potential funding sources? Um will be, will be spent?
Uh we've had, staff has had three study sessions to uh brainstorm ideas uh as far as uh fundings, uh funding for that, that money. Um we're working with H D L, uh with their guidance, we're gonna work in the, within the guidelines of the restrictions from the federal government. So we do have a wish list of, wish list of things that we would like to improve in the city, which is uh information about COVID nineteen. Uh business assistance, rental assistance, um staff repayment during COVID. So we have a laundry list of things that we would like to uh reimburse, but also look forward in uh integrating in our city. But we would like to work with uh some consulting with much more experience to guide us in the right direction.
Um if I may, um this is Felice Lopez, Director of Finance. Um we also have a representative from H D L here to answer questions as well. If you'd like to um direct them to uh Barry.
Well, um are there any questions? Are, are there any questions for Mister Steel? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Montero first.
Okay, so I, I do have a question, I don't know who's good to answer, but have you uh, the finance department, have you guys? Um keep tracking of all the uh, the money that we lost, like for example, the T O T revenues and sales tax? Uh so, so we can also put that in our plan to be recovered?
Correct, yes, that'll be part of it, yes.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Okay.
I still have, Felice, real quick, how do you guys select these consultants?
Um we received um actually an inquiry from them with information on, on how they are, are approaching. This um program and how many cities they've already helped. Um and so they've already put together um plans for about five or six cities, and they're in the process of. Um signing contracts with several other cities, um and they, they're, you know. They, they already are um consultants for us in uh sales tax and property tax. And we have confidence in them and, and the work that they do.
And what's gonna be their cost for consulting to providing, uh giving us recommendations?
Uh it's about fifty three thousand, and this is all recoverable from the same funding.
And that's within four years. So there's uh four payments within four years, uh not to exceed fifty eight thousand dollars.
And so it's just gonna be taken from the thirty three million?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Right.
Are you taking recommendations? Are you, are you asking all departments what their wish list is, or are you just making a selection?
No, we have asked all departments to submit um information on what they would like to see.
Okay, and you said that, that some of this money is for reimbursements on, on things that the city has lost, does that include um? Hire, hiring new employees where needed?
Uh revenues lost, definitely, um reimbursement um for, it, there's gonna be several different areas. But that's why we, we have um H D L coming in to, to help us to make sure that we are focusing on. You know, on the community as well as the city, what the city has lost.
Can you, can you um, can you get us, um, can you get us on just um? Something to the council so that the council could be able to provide their recommendations also?
Oh absolutely, yes, once, once we have the uh agreement signed, then we would definitely go to council for recommendations. On what it is that you want to see um this money spent on.
So you don't see this going up in cost, it's gonna be fifty three thousand within four years?
Uh the agreement that uh we're asking for me to enter uh the C N two will not exceed fifty eight thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh do you have any questions for the Chair of H D L, as he's on the line?
I think, I think if, I, I think, uh no, not from the, from the individual, thank you anyhow. Um I think Felice answered the questions, and I think when we get um the finalization of all of this wish list from everybody involved, including the council. And then obviously, the consultant can give us whether or not this is even fee, uh something that's gonna be feasible for us to uh, to do within the thirty three million. To adhere to the federal rate mandates, right?
Absolutely.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh roll call vote, please.
I had a, I had a question, um to follow, a follow-up question. So um you're going to um get further feedback from the council, because didn't we already give? Uh Eric Lee, our uh feedback as to what we wanted to see done with the money we, that we were, we were going to receive?
Absolutely, but I think one of the challenges that we're gonna have, Councilwoman Valentine, is um the guidelines aren't completed yet. So, once we receive those guidelines and work with H D L. Uh we can circle back on those items that might not be uh obtainable to see if, how we wanna move forward with other items.
Alright, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
And to hold on, Mister Mayor, uh.
You have a question?
And then, and then the al- ultimate decision would be the, to bring those uh, the final product to the city council, the final list was approved, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mister City Manager, item number seventeen, please.
Uh good evening again. Um item seventeen uh is related to campaign contributions. We have uh Craig Steele from Richard Watson and Gashawn, he has uh multiple years' experience in. Uh the Missis- Mississippi um state law, uh he works on several boards and uh he's here to explain. Uh the do's and don'ts and understanding of com- campaign uh contributions to council members. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, pleased to be with you this evening. I was asked to address a question that came up at your. Last city council meeting, which I um reviewed the, the video of relating to whether a campaign contribution. To a member of the city council can create a qual- uh conflict of interest such that. A member um could be disqualified from voting on a matter that would affect that contributor. So uh Eric, if we can share the slides, please?
Mister Steel, can you please speak up? I could barely hear you.
Sorry, I will uh speak right into the microphone, is that better?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um this is the basic uh conflict of interest law in California. Um this is from the Political Reform Act, Government Code, Section eighty seven one hundred. There are a couple of other conflict laws. But this is, this is kind of the main um law that you all have to comply with. It says a public official may not make, participate in making, or in any way attempt to use their official position to influence. A governmental decision in which they know or have reason to know they have a financial interest. So obviously, the key to that, to determining whether something creates a conflict of interest. Is determining whether a public official has uh, uh a financial interest in that decision. Next slide, please. There are a whole bunch of uh types of financial interests, and you all know because you file your Form seven hundred. Uh the types of interests you are asked to uh declare and watch out for, things like owning stock in a corporation. Or your employer, or um a business position. Um those kinds of things that are not really relevant to the, the question that was asked of me. The two types of financial interests that could create a conflict uh based on a monetary campaign contribution. Would be sources of income or sources of gifts. And so the question is whether a campaign contribution is either income or gift when it is received by a public official. Next slide, please. Can, in fact, campaign contributions are specifically excluded from the definition of income. Under Government Code, Section eight two oh three oh, and campaign contributions are also specifically excluded from the definition of gift. Under Government Code, Section eighty four oh two eight. So that means that campaign contributions are not financial interests. That would create a conflict of interest on the part of the uh public official who receives it. Now, there's an exception that I wanna make sure we put out there, um and that's in Government Code, Section eighty four oh three eight. That section says a campaign contribution to an appointed official. Uh acting in an appointed capacity can in some circumstances create a conflict of interest. Now, you are all acting as elected officials in, in this capacity, this statute doesn't apply to you as elected officials. But I always wanna make sure we point it out that some, because sometimes camp, uh council members are appointed to different uh other boards. Like a cog board or the sanitation district, um or a mosquito and vector control district. When you're acting in that appointed position, you have to be very careful about um when campaign contributors come before you. On your appointed board, but as elected officials sitting in the, on the city council. Um a campaign contribution is not considered to be income, it's not considered to be a gift specifically by these definitions. Next slide, please. And so because a campaign contribution is not considered to be income or not considered to be a gift. Um or any, any of the other defined financial interests. The campaign contribution cannot create a statutory conflict of interest for the elected official who receives it. So there's no uh legal reason why an elected official has to abstain from a vote that affects a campaign contributor. I think the reason for this, um frankly, is that campaign contributions are. Um determined by this United States Supreme Court to be political speech. It's, there are, the act of giving a contribution is a act of political speech that's protected by the First Amendment. And so government can't get in the business of saying either nobody can contribute to political candidates, that would be absurd. Or some people can contribute, some people cannot. Um the act of political speech is protected by the First Amendment. Now, there is some regulation of that act of political speech, the contribution has to be um disclosed. It can't be accepted, for example, in cash or in ways that are easy to hide. So there's transparency about the existence of the contribution. But there's not a law that requires a public official to abstain from voting on a matter that impacts a campaign contributor. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Good cheer. Go ahead. Uh are you, I'm Mr. Steel, are you familiar with um F P P C rules? Are those rules or those laws? Like how, how do they apply?
Well, the, the F P P C enforces the Political Reform Act, which is the statute that I just uh quoted. So the F P P C um enforces the Political Reform Act laws. They also have some regulations that sort of define the laws that they enforce.
Um I'm looking at a campaign manual from the F P P C, uh chapter four point five. Says, it references uh Government Code, Section three two zero five, are you familiar with that?
Uh not off the top of my head, I think I know what the chapter is, though. It's, it's about soliciting contributions.
Correct, I'm just curious if this applies to our city at all. It says Government Code, Section three two zero five. Where it is a local candidate from knowingly, directly, or indirectly soliciting a political contribution from any employees. Of his or her agency or from a person on an employment list of that agency. Does, does that apply to our?
Yeah, that, that applies, um there's also a, an exception in that stat, that, that does apply, there's also a. An exception in a law, a subsequent section that, that says except where it's part of a broader. Like a citywide solicitation or a neighborhood solicitation or something like that, but yes, that statute does apply.
So if there's a uh. A, a full public solicitation, um then that's the exception.
Uh yeah, or a large, or a large segment of the public. If there's a large mailing list, for example, and a fundraiser goes out, that's um. That's the exception, uh public officials can't sort of walk around City Hall with a campaign envelope handing it out to employees.
Got it, thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So Mister Steel, I just wanna understand uh what you just said. We know that you can't make um contributions, donations in City Hall, we know that's illegal. There can't be any activity or of campaigning inside City Hall, let alone uh using campaign. Um you know, using an office, using uh equipment, et cetera, to campaign from City Hall. Um not necessarily on a financial um conflict of interest, but what about the perception? The perception, say for instance, of uh, of uh someone getting an employment. Uh uh favoritism on a job that the city may have. That was uh influenced by an elec- an elected official, official. What about that?
Well, um. The, the cases say that the law is aimed at, at the perception of impropriety. As well as actual illegal activity.
Right.
So when, when the law says something, you have to assume that. Um in this area at least, in conflicts of interest and, and transparency, the law is determining. Um where that line on perception is, and in the case of political speech at least. Um the line for, for the perception is a little bit farther off than in some other, some other areas. Because political speeches is protected by the First Amendment. Now that's, I mean, that's, that's the lawyer in me telling you what, what that means. Frankly, I, I mean, after thirty years in government, uh everybody has to have their own sort of moral compass. About perception and how things look. Um but in the case of campaign contributions, you can't really start drawing the line between contributors. Because one contributor might later on ask for a job, another contributor might be asking for a, a city contract. Um employee organizations often make political contributions, and then they're asking for a better contract. So what, how the law deals with this is to have it disclosed, have it out there in the open. And let the voters and the, and the public make their own decision about the perception.
Would that include endorsements?
Yeah, as long as that endorsement doesn't um, uh as you said, take place, you know, with political activity in City Hall. It's the same, it's the same type of analysis with an endorsement.
Okay, so it's the perception and, and where you would find a conflict of interest?
Yeah, I think that, they're two different things, right? There's a statutory conflict of interest, and that's the lawyer in me tells you what that is. Perception is about the voters and your constituents deciding what's right and what's wrong. You could, as a council, and you have, I've, I've seen your um code of ethics. You have certain ethical guidelines, um not one about this subject, but you have sort of guidelines about how you're all gonna behave. And how city employees are gonna behave. Some cities have a guideline that says. You know, no solicitation of campaign contributions, no political endorsements, those kinds of things.
Right.
But we have to be really careful about um regulating employees' political speech. Because there are cases um that, that say employees have the First Amendment right to participate in political activity. in political activities, as long as they're not doing it in uniform, as long as they're not doing it on city time.
Okay. So I guess we could tighten the, um, the ordinance that we have a little bit more.
I, I think you could, um, regulate together your own political activities. You could say, we won't, as council members, do this. The difficulty is when you try to regulate your employees' political speech.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Can I get, I'm sorry. Can I, um, um, interim city attorney and interim city manager, can you bring back an ordinance, um, to the next ca- city council that speaks to exactly what was just mentioned? Um, and I think I had asked previously, um, Russ, before he left, to bring us back at, uh, uh, a revised, um, resolution. So I wanna follow up on that.
Uh, to be clear, you, you wanted a resolution clarifying based on what Mr. Steele has just presented?
Uh, it, it wasn't, it, I, I believe it was a resolution, but it, it speaks to what we have as, as, um, as an ordinance that speaks to the, we understand that, we understand that there's a, a First Amendment rights, you know, freedom of speech. But everything that is perceived in, in conflict, and as mentioned by Mr. Steele, I would like to assure that that's implemented, so that everyone has, uh, a rule of thumb with regards to what we have on the books, uh, with regards to conflict of interest and participation.
Okay, I'll look into that and, and come up with something.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, council members. Thank you, uh, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I have number eighteen, please.
Uh, yes, we have our planning and community, uh, development director, Mr. Greg Sushiuchi. He's gonna discuss SB nine four six regarding sidewalk, sidewalk vendors.
Yes, this will be a, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potam, and members of the council. This will be a joint presentation, uh, with the city attorney's office. Uh, Eric, could you please, uh, show the PowerPoint? Okay. Melissa, where do you like to start?
I will. Good evening, mayor, city council, staff, and members of the public. I will start us off with this presentation. This is, this presentation is a result of a, a series of questions that the council had at the last council meeting, um, regarding sidewalk vending. Um, you were also given a legal confidential from our office that addressed a couple of additional questions. But in this presentation, we wanted to go over some issues, some general issues, and, um, talk about code enforcement efforts, which was, uh, one of your inquiries. So, um, just by way of background, right, the legislature passed SB nine forty six. It became effective January first, two thousand nineteen, and it decriminalized sidewalk vending. But as you also know, it created a system that preempted a lot of local regulation in this area. So, as a result, um, we actually adopted an ordinance, ordinance twenty one seventy one, that added a new chapter to our municipal code that addressed sidewalk vending to be in conformity with this new state law. So, how it works essentially is there is a sidewalk vending permit process, and there's also business license tax certificate as a requirement. So it's, uh, we are still, and that's under our general, um, uh, uh, licensing regulations. Um, so what we added was, uh, a permitting process for sidewalk vending, and then our, our regular ordinance having to do with taxes is also applicable. Uh, next slide, please. So what exactly is sidewalk vending? I, again, this is just by way of background and summary. Um, it is vending from a vending cart, or from one's person, um, on a public sidewalk, par- parkway, pedestrian path, or o- other public right-of-way available to pedestrians, or also in a park. So in state law, as well as in our own ordinance, uh, sidewalk vending can be either stationary or roaming, right? So stationary would be in a fixed location, roaming would be going up and down the streets. So our sidewalk vending ordinance does not address vending from vehicles. That was a question that came up. That's addressed by the, not by SB nine forty six, but the state's vehicle code. And it's also addressed in a different chapter of our code that was adopted in nineteen ninety six. That's chapter five point five seven. Next slide. So here's where I will turn it over to your planning director, Greg Sachiuchi.
Uh, thank you. Um, so there was a question about our current code enforcement officers, uh, efforts, and so I wanted to just kinda go over that. Um, so currently, uh, our officers, when they're encountering, uh, sidewalk vendors, um, they're having discussions, providing verbal warnings, but not issuing citations. Um, many of the vendors don't have, uh, any form of identification. So in order to assist the officers in following up, uh, for reoccurrences, there's usually photos taken of the equipment, sometimes the vendors themselves, uh, and vehicles. Uh, when we do get a photo of a vehicle, uh, we get the license plate information, and we're able to follow up with formal letters uh, to the address that's tied to that license plate. And those are your bigger vendors that you were seeing setting up, uh, canopies along, uh, our major arterials. Uh, me, every encounter, we provided, uh, verbal education of licensing and, and agency contact information, meaning we're providing them the, um, LA County Public Health for food vendors, so that they can get a health permit. We also refer them to the State of California Department of Business Licensing, so that they can get a, a proper permit for that. And then subsequently, with those items, they can then come to our business licensing division to obtain a vendor's permit, and also a business license. Um, some of the other things we do while we're out there, if you notice, uh, Hawthorne has some very close boundaries to unincorporated areas of LA County. Also neighboring cities of Gardena and Longdale, um, our officers have, uh,
Back in a little while.
Yeah, no problem. Please mute yourself, uh, council members. Please mute yourself during the presentation.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Go ahead.
Uh, our, our officers have notified, uh, LA County Health, which is their Inglewood office, and they believe they have a, we're not sure what the formal calling of their task force or group is, but we believe it's a vendor task force. Um, our officers did encounter them apparently, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, regarding a vendor that was on El Segundo Boulevard by Ocean Gate Avenue. Uh, and that's why they know of this specific task force that the county has, and in order to get a hold of it, and you contact the LA County Health at their Inglewood office. Um, so they do do that when they recognize a, a lot of the vendors that are actually in the unincorporated areas of LA County. Um, City of Gardena is the same. City of Gardena, I know that actually spoken to their fellow counterparts. Um, and the City of Longdale, I, I know that they've left it on the general, uh, phone line. Uh, so far, we've been, uh, with, with the, uh, need for adjusting schedules and some overtime on the weekends, uh, the four officers have been volunteering to, to do that, and, and, uh, they've been pretty successful in, in cleaning up, uh, a lot of the, uh, vendors that have been going on that are unlicensed. Next slide. So, uh, the council was, would like to entertain additional code enforcement efforts. Um, and so staff has come up with these additional items. Uh, we're currently developing an educational bilingual brochure that many of the other cities, I believe, uh, council woman, uh, Angie Reyes English, mentioned one from the City of Los Angeles. So we did take a look at that, use some of their information uh, to produce one. We're currently having it translated by our in-house staff. Um, and we'll also use that same, uh, educational brochure uh, to use as a, um, I guess a webpage that they can also click a link to. So it'll have a dual purpose, where we'll have printed ones that we can hand out, and along with using it, uh, up on our website. Uh, and this will be particular, uh, particularly advantageous for our non-Spanish speaking code officers. We will, uh, if the council desires, we'll start issuing administrative citations. Um, these are for unlicensed sidewalk vendors. So the first vendor, uh, first occurrence is a citation of two hundred and fifty dollars. The second violation is five hundred dollars. The third and subsequent violations would then be one thousand dollars. Um, there was also a question about sidewalk vending occurring in our residential areas. Uh, our current, uh, ordinance, our municipal code five point five seven A, uh, and, um, doesn't allow stationary vending in area zones strictly residential, or exclusively residential. So it would be your R ones, twos, threes, and four areas. So I think there was a notification or concern that there were uh, some residents setting up, uh, sidewalk vending in front of their homes, or on their driveways, or whatnot. Uh, and so, um, I'm going already inform the code enforcement officers to start looking for those areas in particular, that it's already in our code, and we need to start enforcing that. Uh, again, there's no vending stationary in our residential areas. However, there are allowed for roaming, uh, sidewalk vendors, again, if they're licensed. And if they're licensed, they can have roaming, roaming sidewalk vending, which I don't want with the carts, uh, between the hours of eight AM and six PM. And anything outside of that, uh, we'll be enforcing. Um, as regards to, there was a question about impounding. Uh, and I'm gonna turn this over to Melissa, because it's a little legal there.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in here with impounding. So, um, that's confiscating the equipment. So as you know, um, with SB nine forty six, it does preempt us. And so when it decriminalized sidewalk vending, essentially it said the only remedy that you have as a city are administrative citations. So, we don't have available to us, um, for violations of sidewalk vending, the confiscating or the impounding. Now, for violations of other generally applicable laws, we may still have that ability. So for example, if there's a, there's, um, a lack of a permit for sidewalk vending, but also a lack of a business license, um, there may be an ability to, a- and go through a process, because that's just general law. You have to provide notice, you have to store, and provide an ability to recover the items. You would be able to do that for violations of other code sections, but not for sidewalk vending. So we're, we're looking into that actually currently our office. It might be time to kind of look back at our policies for that, and to look more into this area to see what, what we can and cannot do. But again, the state law does preempt us, so we have some limitations here.
And to finish up, uh, with our additional enforcement efforts, um, we're already working with human resources, uh, looking to bring on some part-time officers to permanently work the weekday evenings, uh, and the weekends. Next slide. So the status of our licenses, um, to date, we only have one sidewalk vendor permit. Uh, I think I mentioned this previously. He's usually located at the target location area, uh, by Lowe's, uh, near the airport area. Um, and, and it's actually two permits, but it's only one card. So there's two people who use the same card, uh, just during different hours. Um, permits are valid for twelve months from the date of issuance, and are renewed on the expiration, prior to the expiration date. Um, so far, since we've had the code officers verbally informing, we've had five recent inquiries uh, to our business license division on how they can become legal. Um, and then we also know that there is one known LA County, uh, lic- licensed sidewalk vendor. Again, he's usually located near El Segundo Boulevard and Ocean Gate Avenue. Um, there may be others that are licensed by the county, but that is the one we know for sure, because apparently our officers uh, dealt with that one in particular. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, what you're seeing here is a couple of images of what we've been working on. These are just the English versions. Again, our code officers are currently, uh, going through a translation. Um, we didn't, uh, reinvent the wheel. We took some of this, uh, from other cities. Um, the one on the left, uh, I like to give my kudos to the Parks and Rec Department, and one, uh, as they drafted that up for us. Uh, the one on the right, uh, the code enforcement staff, uh, got together and, and did that one. Um, and so, one of the things we wanted to highlight is that when they do seek a sidewalk vending permit application, there's three additional important things that's gonna be required of them, and that's one, they need to describe the food or merchandise being offered for sale. Uh, they need to determine whether operating as a stationary or roaming. And then the description of time, place, and manner of proposed vending, meaning what hours, their location, and then are they gonna be a roaming or, uh, stationary, uh, vendor. Uh, next slide. Um, these are just enlarged images, uh, what I was showing you, just to give you an idea of what we're working on. Again, we need to translate them, uh, and kinda go through our own vetting, uh, making sure we close any loopholes. Um, but we, we did use other cities' information, uh, to help us. So one is about, how do you get permitted? And then the other one is if you are permitted, how do you maintain, uh, a successful sidewalk vendor? Uh, next slide.
I can jump in on this one. Uh, so there were some questions also about, um, locations related to sidewalk vending. We already discussed residential. Um, Greg talked about that. So the scheme is, uh, in the state law, is to allow us to do certain things. And we already talked about some of them, um, which was, you know, to, uh, we may prohibit, for example, um, stationary vending in residential zones. But what, what it says on other locations is that, um, we cannot restrict sidewalk vending in, to only certain designated areas unless we make the specific finding. And the finding is that it must be, must be directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. That's echoed throughout the law. If there's something that you wanna do, you have to have a finding. You have to make that determination that it's necessary for objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. Um, so, it's a finding, and what the law has also said is that perceived community animus, so just not liking sidewalk vending, or having a certain perception about the folks who do sidewalk vending, is not, is not a objective health, safety, or welfare concern. Neither is economic competition, right? There's always some concerns about, well, if they're so close to restaurants. Um, both of those are specifically spelled out in state law as not being health, safety, um, not related to health, safety, or welfare concerns. There's also a question about limiting the number of licenses, and the state law does address that as, as well, and it says specifically that shall, that a state agi- that, that a local agency shall not restrict the number of licenses, um, uh, of, of sidewalk vending, um, unless there is, again, a determination, some sort of finding that says that doing so would, um, serve an objective health, safety, or welfare concern. Um, so, we as staff are looking into what's out there right now, um, but in terms of sidewalk vending. Um, there were some questions about propane tanks and possible other time, place, and manner restrictions. The time, place, and manner restrictions, again, have to have that finding, so it requir- requires some study. Um, but we're looking at what other cities are doing. Um, generally speaking, most cities are, uh, being in conformity with state law. I, I haven't seen a lot of pushing of the envelope. Typically, when you see that, it's gonna be the big cities that do that, um, and some of the big cities really haven't been doing that, but this is kind of ongoing research for us. So we'll keep looking to see what out there we can find. They may already ha- cities that may have already made some, some of, some of those findings themselves, um, which would be helpful for us in, um, as we move forward, and possibly making some amendments to our, to our, our code. Um, so, that's, that's kind of where we're at. I also wanted to mention that there are some just other restrictions that we have our, in our code that, um, we've put, uh, in, on our books, and just to give you an example, um, street vending, um, sidewalk vending can't be within twenty feet of a street intersection, within ten feet of a fire hydrant, fire call box, or other emergency facility, which is not defined, within ten feet of any driveway or driveway apron, um, within, uh, or upon, um, a roadway median strip or dividing section. That's, that's already in there. And, um, also in conformity with state law, we are allowed to limit sidewalk vending for, um, within certain feet of, uh, farmers markets, and within certain areas from wherever we give special permits, and for us, that would be community event permits. So, and film permits. So we have that in our cold, our code as well, that already limits, uh, the, the, the location of sidewalk vending if it's within certain feet of these types of activities. Um, and I think it was also mentioned some issues with regard to, um, the pathways. So, in our code, it already says that vending can occur in a manner that blocks or obstructs the free movement of pedestrians or vehicles, and they have to provide a clearance of not less than three feet of, on all sidewalks or pedestrian areas, so as to enable persons to freely pass. So that, that's already in our code, and that's all in conformity with state law as well. So with that, I think, next slide. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Yeah, I'll start off with the questions. Thank you very much. I was going to ask how many permitted vendors we have, and apparently it's only one. And, um, I, I do see that vendor over there at the tar- And um I, I do see that vendor over there at the Target, they're selling their fruits. Okay, and so they applied for the process, um you know, congratulations to them for being in conformance. And then we, I do see the other vendor you were referring to, it's the same type of fruit vending over there, like in be. Uh El Segundo in between the Jack in the Box and the gas station near Ocean Gate. So um they have permits. I was always wondering about them. Uh so I have two questions. Do we have the two hundred and fifty, the five hundred dollars fine, and the thousand dollar fines? Are those already existing fines that we have, or are these new fines you uh that are being uh come up with?
Those are existing fines in our ordinance.
Okay, very good. Then the, the most in quest- the more, the most important question for me is. Can the city be held liable in a lawsuit if uh a resident or. You already, you already know where I'm going with this, right? Uh Melissa, you're smiling, okay. No, but can the city be held liable if a resident gets sick or somebody gets sick and sues us? For not regulating the uh food vendors? Can we be held liable if somebody gets sick? Can we be made a defendant in a lawsuit?
That's uh, it's a very good question. Um well, we can be made defendant in a lawsuit. Um even under circumstances where we don't have liability, and that's where we would um seek to dismiss ourselves. Um I, I may have to also include um interim city attorney Mr. Kim to opine on this. But generally, just issuance of a license in and of itself does not create a liability for the city in and of itself. There would have to be some other type of activity or involvement on the part of the city that could potentially raise um some sort of liability. But just issuing the license, especially when we're issuing a sidewalk vending permit license or a business license. Um these are acts that we do as a public agency all the time, and they, they don't, they don't create a cause of action for anyone. So if the answer is likely no, no, um but we know that people, you know. Sue cities for all reasons and no reasons as well.
Ms. Crossway, no, okay, so that's if we issue the license, but what if we knowingly back off on enforcement of this? And uh the, the ones that do not have the permit, the ones that are just running around and it's okay, our policy is just leave them alone, don't do anything. Those are.
We have. Well, generally speaking with code enforcement, we have prosecutorial discretion, so we are never under an obligation. Where we have to cite anyone. That is something that is a determination that's made by inspectors on a case-by-case basis. So as long as they're exercising that prosecutorial discretion, there, there would be no liability for. For not going after a particular vendor, for example.
A particular vendor, okay, no, that's.
Or, or vendors in general. It's, it's, there's discretion that is being utilized, as long as it's not um. You know discriminatory, or there's other, other things involved, that, that's the whole point of being able to do code enforcement, is that you can make decisions. We don't have unlimited resources as a city, no one does. So sometimes we have to pick and choose what um types of violations we go after. So just the act of doing that and not going after a particular group or a particular vendor would not create liability.
So yeah, so my, my interest in this issue is as a result of, of city homeowners association uh groups. Throughout the city, not in just one particular area, but in all corners of the city that they're concerned that this is happening. Um but I'm proud of those individuals who did apply for the uh permit that are over there near Target. One thing I would like to say, uh Mr. uh Souduchi, is that um ideally, the business licensing of these sidewalk vendors. I would love to see this thing a- as expedited as possible. So that the sidewalk vendors see that it's uh in their benefit to go ahead through the process to get these things permitted. And make sure we facilitate that as much as possible with good quality uh customer service, bilingual service at the counter. And making sure that um, like I said, as facilitated as possible. Those who aren't in conformance, then I think that we, we generally have a problem with them, but go ahead. Uh Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you.
And then a council member, Angie Reyes English. Was somebody going to say something to what I said?
I, I, I just wanna chime in on this, on the liability issue. Uh in terms of someone getting sick and suing the city and whatnot. The food actually, the preparation of the food is monitored and regulated by the county health department. And they're required to have health department license as well. So I don't really foresee cities' liability. Because um we didn't sufficiently regulate uh food and the quality of the food. So I, I really don't think that's a big risk for the city.
Um interim city attorney, I, I, I'm not even concerned. That's what, that's what the process is for because of public health. I'm talking about those unregulated ones who have not applied for permit, who are running around without anything, just selling stuff out of. Their, whatever their carts. I mean, I would like to see that facilitated because. I would say that somebody could make an argument to sue us knowingly, we, we're not going after it, and we have a policy up here that we establish that. Anybody can do whatever they want. So that's what I'm most concerned with. No, but I, thank you for that piece. I'm not concerned about the permitted ones. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, Councilmember English, and then uh Councilmember Montero.
Yes, I had a question uh concerning the illegal vendors. So um what is our policy about illegal vendors? Are we, and, and what are the numbers that we're seeing as far as uh those vendors?
Um I guess the best, uh the best answer I can provide uh is going back to our current efforts. Uh which is right now, we're providing verbal warnings, educating them. Um you know, documenting as best we could because a lot of them don't have identification so that we can follow up. Um we're working with the neighboring agencies just to let them know that things are going on in their neighborhoods also, uh just because they're on our borders. Um so that's what we're currently doing.
All right, what kinds of numbers are you seeing?
Um that's hard to say. Uh you know, initially, uh when this became a big concern, I'd say almost two months ago. And we first started having our officers work in the weekday evening and the weekends, it was pretty significant. Um I do have reports um with photos. I mean, they were pretty obnoxious. Some were two or three uh canopies on our sidewalks on Rose Prans Avenue uh with grills and skillets going on. Um and it was pretty bad, but um since we've started our efforts, uh we've seen a big uh drop in those numbers. Um yesterday, we found, uh we had one code officer who volunteered uh two or three hours. Um between the hours of six and eight or six and nine, uh he found three. Um they were in our residential neighborhoods. They were push cart uh uh off uh ice cream type. And so, and none of the big larger ones on our major arterials uh recently.
Now, they, they're not allowed to, are, are, is there um a restriction on operating on the weekends for even the legal vendors?
Um I, I, our code doesn't restrict on days of the week. It, it does have restrictions on hours. Um and I'd have to refer exactly to them, but one of them was for the residential areas. Uh I believe it was from eight AM to six PM. Uh in other areas, it actually refers to that they could operate as long as the other businesses that are similar types. Uh like storefront businesses. Uh if they're open till ten or eleven. Uh then the actual sidewalk vendors in that area could serve, or if they're licensed, um. Continue roaming uh up until that same time period, ten or eleven.
Now, what I have seen is um the operation of um someone selling cars out of their home. In a residential neighborhood, would that be considered sidewalk vending? Or is that something else? I've seen that in, in, in my neighborhood.
I, I, I wouldn't consider that sidewalk vending. It seems like that would be, if it was legally home occupational permit. And I don't, I don't, I've never seen one like that. I guess maybe our business licensing group could comment if they had something like that.
What we can do, we can take that under a study and report back at the next council meeting.
Thank you, that, that sounds fine. Um. And then I'm, I'm also uh interested in the size of the fines because you're starting at two fifty. Um is that uh set in stone? Could that be changed? Because I'm thinking that um maybe that isn't enough of a deterrent. Could we, could we start at five hundred?
Um this is in our ordinance. Um Melissa, is there a way of, I guess, skipping the first violation amount?
Um i- if I'm not mistaken, the amounts are actually set out by state law. So we were just in conformity with what state law. Allowed. So those numbers reflect what we're allowed to do. Um and actually for, the fines are actually, yeah, they are. They're spelled out in state law. Um in SB nine forty-six. And actually, the fines are different. So if you have a, a valid sidewalk of, uh vending permit. And then you fail to follow the hours of operation, for example, the fines are um different. One hundred, two fifty, and five hundred. They're actually lower.
That makes sense.
So um and that's also set, set out by state law.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes English, and then Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mayor. So um. The reason I'm gonna say that the street vending concerns uh came uh up. Within the last couple of months um is due to the uptick of residents. And businesses contacting me with concerns of illegal vending. Having said that, the information that you provided tonight is first steps. Not only in educating, right? Cause at, up to this point, we didn't have any literature that spoke to education. In English and Spanish to potential vendors. And then the other thing was um basically to the general public. Because we're mandated from what our attorneys are telling us, and we need to stay uh in compliance with the mandate. But what we're failing to, to address here is there's three permitted licenses that should be permitted, not one. So if you've got vendors that are out there vending, and there's a lot of them, you just don't know and don't see them. Is not only the city permit, there's the county permit and a state permit. There's three permits. So with, with regards to um folks saying that um, you know, they only need the city permit. That's not necessarily true. And if you're saying that, oh, well, the county's the one that regulates the county. Uh health inspectors regulate the food on whether or not the temperature is hot or cold, et cetera, et cetera. The point still remains that they're in violation because they don't have all three licenses that's required. So although we're putting things in place, at the end of the day, the education doesn't go further enough. Your brochure should include that they need, that they require three licenses. That needs to be in black and white on that literature. And you need to speak, you need to speak to the point that they require all three of them to vend.
Councilmember English, I have a question for you. Um did you see the, do you see the way they laid it out? It, it kind of sort of does have it there, but are you saying that it's not clear enough?
No, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
Because what's happening is you, you, you have in, the code enforcement, enforcement officers that are going out there and saying. Oh, well, they have a city permit, right? But there's no other permits, and you're saying that just because they have our permit that they're legal. And that's not necessarily true, because all the vendors in the city of Los Angeles, which there's a lot of them now. Because illegal vending is now legal, and there was policy and legislation passed that allowed that. With restrictions on how they could vend on a sidewalk, within certain hours, and how it's being done. Which also speaks to the equipment that is used, how it's used, and where it's placed. So there's a lot more that we need to look at. I don't know if your, your team, Greg, needs to go to Los Angeles and take a look. But there's requirements, and what you got happening now are, because it is legal in the city of Los Angeles. You've got people fighting for spaces, open, open use, uh o- open permitted uses on sidewalks. So you got folks fighting for, for space, fighting for, you know, that's my space, I was there last week, et cetera, et cetera. So these are things that I, I'm hoping to not only um. Not happen to us here in our city, but put more emphasis on the e- education portion of it. If you're saying that we only have one, one that came and got a permit from the city, did we check for the other permits? Do we know that he's got a county permit, or they have a county permit? Do they have a state permit? I don't know. So um I read the legal confidential's with regards to illegal vending from a car. And the street vending, uh street food vendors. Um I think it's unfair um to just say that, you know, our hands are tied. Because I do believe that we as a city, especially a city that makes our own laws in a sense, right? Regulates what, what laws we implement into the city. And what, what laws are ultimately, we need to follow as a resident, a good resident. A business owner, now in this point, a street vendor. Um it requires. More, and although there's, you're looking at hiring Greg a two-part-time, uh there has to be a bilingual somewhere in that hire. There has to be a bilingual at the counter, like the mayor mentioned, and there needs to be more information on that brochure that's being provided. Um and I, I get the fact that vendors are not allowed to participate, or not set up within. You know, driveway, farmer's market, community event, filming locations, et cetera. But this is exactly what the city of Los Angeles did. With regards to LA Live, the football stadium, all these big venues that are downtown. Where you literally are stumbling and tripping on vendors that are set up exactly there, right? As soon as you come out of a, of a venue. And it's really scary because they have open flame. It is open, it's very hot. Um they're using propane gas tanks, they're using uh charcoal. They're using, you know, whatever means it takes to cook food on a sidewalk. Now, uh to each their own with regards to where you wanna purchase your food. Uh there's a lot of talk here about uh certain vendors that they like to eat from or order food from. But I have seen in my years of, of working in the city of LA and other areas, mind you. That some of it is not all sanitation, uh sanitation or uh sanitary, I should say. And this includes uh the requirements for a vendor in Los Angeles to have water station. For hand sanitizing, for cleaning their hands. This includes uh who's handling money and who's doing food. This is all important. All of us know that, especially during this pandemic that we're in. You have, and you, you can visually see it, sometimes you have vendors handling food and handling money. And there's no gloves, there's no protection. So these are really, really concerning things to just say that. As long as the vendor has a permit from the city of Hawthorne, that they're good. I think that's not safe, nor is it fair to say, especially for those that are contacting council members with concerns that they have. And I've seen it too. I've seen it, I've, I've driven in the community, I've seen it personally. And so what you end up having too are vendors setting up like their restaurants on a sidewalk, backed up with vehicles. And then you got the music playing, they're blasting music, like this is a restaurant setting on a sidewalk with music and chairs and tables. But all you're saying is as long as they have a permit, that that's, that's good, and it's not. Because you're taking away from the ADA compliance of residents and pedestrians walking on sidewalks. Then you're gonna have folks blocking the ramps of those sidewalks. Next, you're gonna have clothing and sales of, of, of clothing on sidewalks, not food. Because now you're going into a whole different area. We're talking about street vending. But, but this, this law that is now in place is saying basically any vending.
Staff, uh we'll gather additional information, uh revamp those flyers, and we'll bring them back to council.
Yeah, I'd like to see uh those revamped.
Uh Councilmember English, I would, I would gladly join you in reviewing the Spanish version of these.
Yep.
Okay, we can look at it together, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to Councilmember Montero because he was next.
Yeah, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um okay, so we need to clarify something here, okay? Because uh it's my understanding that for the city of Hawthorne to, to give a, a, a. Permit or licensing for those street vendors, they have to have first the health department permit. It's in, it's in our ordinance, correct, Melissa?
That's correct, yes. Um, yes.
So, so this is what we need to uh make sure that everybody understand. And also to put on that brochure. Before you come to the city of Hawthorne to, to request a uh business license to operate a, a, a street vendor. You have first have to get those other permit. One of them is the health department. permit. One of them is the health department, or or even if they have to have some kind of state license. So they have to have those licenses first before they can be issued a city of Hawthorne business license. So it is in our ordinance because I remember reading that.
Yes, just to, so to clarify, our, our permit requirements, just to come and get a sidewalk permit, um, a sidewalk vending permit, excuse me, um, you have to have the seller's permit number from the state. You have to have your health permit from the county, and we actually do require you to get your ba- your business license um and pay your business license tax to get your tax certificate before you get your sidewalk vending permit.
Okay, so so that we uh have to be very clear specified on that brochure that you guys are putting together. Because that also, that maybe uh also you have to give uh Ms. uh 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 Councilwoman English that ordinance that we passed because she was not sitting on that council when we passed that ordinance in in two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty.
That's true.
Uh, okay, because there is a lot of stuff there that Ms. English is not familiar with, but they already know in our books. So I I appreciate that what she's saying is true, but but we already have a process in place. So, so thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember colleagues. And a real quick comment on that, it's just, it's just, look, it it's inevitable that people are not gonna know, they're gonna come here because they just think that they need to apply here like they said. But make sure it's clear. Make sure you have the numbers. Make sure you have the websites. And just have a, just break it off into sections. In order to do this, have a line in between each section showing what they need to do and the steps, a little bit more clear. Um, I I like, I mean, I appreciate the Parks and Rec uh departments assistance in this, but just, it could be made a little bit clearer, right? And then also having the links online as well, like the hot links, so that they could go to those websites if they're looking online. So I think that's pretty much it for this item. Okay, guys? Okay, thank you so much, guys. Mister, Mister, Mister City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Mister Mayor, I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval.
I move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Uh, that's right. I, that's correct. Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes, uh, aye.
Mayor Pro- Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Vargas?
Yes, aye, aye.
All right. The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting aye or yes.
I mean, I, man, I feel like we're in Parliament in Britain or something. What's going on right here?
To the chair, real quick, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, City Manager Vaughn?
Yes.
I, I, I really hope that this um, you know, customer service enhancement um, you know, is one that we really work hard on. And uh include, you know, phone etiquette and and, you know, all of the above with regards to customer service. More importantly for me is returning calls and answering emails.
Absolutely. Uh, over the last three weeks, uh, H R Director myself interviewed each department multiple times to come up with strategies and solutions to uh assist those flaws that we do have. So we're very excited to roll out this implementation plan and excited to see the changes. So uh bear with us as we make those changes, but we do see changing, changes coming to City Hall, and we're very excited about that.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, that's a good point. Um, Councilmember Reyes English. And uh we absolutely support uh our management and our employees. Um, but they have to know that they are a reflection of us. The way they treat the residents is as if they, we, we were dealing with them. They represent all of us, so it's taken very seriously. I don't like it when I reach, get a complaint, and I have to go to uh management and have to get it addressed. So uh we, we're gonna uh see how these changes go. And uh hopefully everything's positive. But if it's continues in a certain direction, then we'll have to address it vigorously as well. Okay, but we're hoping everybody uh buys in as a team player. Okay, next we have City Councilmember Action Items. Background checks of all directors of departments in City Hall. Patterson, go ahead. Councilmember?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And this is really a question I'll open up for the council to discuss. I was a previous council meeting, a special meeting, uh, where the idea of doing background checks on, doing a background check on a um contractor that is request, you know, that we've done an R F P for, and we're looking to award a contract to. And it reminded me of the fact that, uh, to my understanding, we don't do a background check on any of our employees, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I know when I I took a position with a, another municipality, I had to go through a pretty extensive background check process where I had to do drug testing, uh, pull my D M V record, pull my criminal record, had to be fingerprinted, uh, had to submit, really it was like maybe eighteen different people for them to, uh, people I currently work with, used to work with, personal references, for this investigator to, to, to contact. And it was pretty extensive. And so it's my understanding, we don't do anything of that sort when we're uh hiring uh anybody in our city. And I would throw out there, maybe something we want to consider when I bring on d- directors uh into our city, especially we have people who are um in charge of money, in charge of, of, of budget. Um, and it may save us some embarrassment if we uh end up uh hiring, you know, stop us from hiring somebody that might have uh some kind of sort of past, uh, might have some um uh experiences that we just don't want to bring to our city.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, can we ask Christine um uh to make it to 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 ca- uh comment on how is, uh, what is our process of a background check?
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Proton, councilmembers. Uh, so typically, we ha- we do backgrounds on everyone who comes, who is hired by the city. Uh, usually, we do a life scan for everybody, and we do a pre-employment physical. For different positions, we do have more extensive backgrounds. Uh, typically, we do do a financial background for those that are working with the finance group or working in the finance department. So there is a different background that we do have performed on those employees that come in.
So, so even if, let's say, if if it was a planning department director or building and safety director, they will still go to that fingerprint background check, correct?
They would still go through that, and typically, we do do a little bit more of a background on directors when they're coming into a position, yes.
Hmm, hmm. So, uh, okay, thank you. Uh, so to the uh, to the Councilman Patterson, can you um be a little bit more clear, what are you specifically looking for?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of what we did. I just wanted to make sure that's something that we, we did do, especially when it comes to our directors. I think the, the process that I, I had to go through at a different municipalities of great standard for us to pursue, I'm not sure if we did background checks to that, to that degree. So in my case, there was a, a firm that was hired that conducts background checks. And like I said, pull my, give my credit report, driving record, criminal history. Um, obviously, drug testing and physical, uh, finger, you know, fingerprints, just the whole shebang. And I think interviewed or sent reference checks to probably maybe like eighteen people, uh, people I currently work with, um, work with in the past and personal references. So I'm not sure if that's exactly what we do, or is just modify the opinion from a position, you know, to the extent of what we do.
So this was, uh, uh, hold on, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, uh, to the internet city manager, city attorney, and now Christine from the human resource. So maybe we need to see the process. Maybe give us a, I don't know if it's a, a legal document or just give us, uh, you know, submit to all of us, uh, what you guys do, um, what is on the books. So we need to look at that, maybe if there is a need to be some revision or that it need to be amended. But I would like to see something, uh, how, how we do it. So then maybe we can, uh, maybe talk more about it.
Yeah, what the formal policy is, that'd be great, good idea for us to review that.
And we'd like to see that for all positions. As Christine mentioned, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that was it, Councilmember Patterson, just a, a point of information. Was that all it was?
That was it. You know, it was just, okay, was that for the, for the council to discuss?
All right, I'll support that as well. I'd like to see that myself. Thank you so much. Setting goals for general fund reserves, Councilmember Patterson?
Sorry, Mayor, I had my hand up.
Oh, you did? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Christine, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so my question is, when you're doing the recruitment process, are you offering them position and then giving them the position, and once they're in, then you're doing the background search?
No, so the law requires us to actually go through certain steps in terms of how we go through the pre-employment process. So they are give, they have to be provided a conditional offer of hire. Um, and so in there, they, it stipulates that they need to pass all the pre-employment requirements um, in order to get a final offer letter. Um, so first, you have to make sure that you're doing any non-medical related background investigation. So that has to be done first. And then once you have all the non-medical background information, then that's when you can do the medical background, um, like the pre-employment physical. And then once you have the pre-employment physical, that's when you're able to provide the final offer letter, and then we set um a start date.
Okay, so it's done before? Before the offer?
Everything is done before someone is actually hired, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Patterson, setting goals for general fund reserves?
Yes, something else I want to open up for the council to discuss. I know that we've been building our reserves over the last number of years and done a great job uh doing so. I think we're at record reserves. Really, my question is, what is our goal? So I know myself as a financial advisor and working with a client, I've set goals with them to have, say, six months of expenses saved and then have a, say, a monthly savings uh objective, or what they want to say long-term for a retirement goal. So for us, I know we are building up our reserves, right? We are, control our, our finances. So one, of course, we can, we have the income to pay our bills, but we have some excess to put away. The question is, how much do we want to put away? It should be at a, it should be a certain number that we're looking to get to. So once we've exceeded that number, we feel comfortable with really reinvesting that excess back into the the infrastructure, back into the city, into the community, into staff or whatnot. So I just wanted to bring that up and and just, you know, ask, is there a number that we're shooting for?
You know, uh, on my end, uh, that's a good question. I think we've all, the contributions of all our councilmember colleagues here, we've reached that point with our cash fund balance, so it's a good thing to celebrate. But what is the threshold is what you're asking. And um, I know that there um, there municipal city standards across different cities. I mean, I think we've exceeded that in some areas. So um, I like to ask, uh, Felice. And if you don't know this, I mean, if you could come back and give us that information, I mean, I'm interested in finding out what are the uh, what would, you know, there's different categories. We're weak when we have this amount, this percentage. We're, we're good when we have this. We're excellent here, and we're far exceeding. I mean, do you have some type of gauge as to the numbers in our reserves and our different, um, our couple of pots of money that we should be at in order to be cost? You know, do you have a grading scale? Where are we with the grading scale, or do you need to look that up?
Uh, we, we can bring that back to you and 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 let you know where, where we fall in that range.
Perhaps you can reach out to, it's just a suggestion, the, the C M T A, the California Municipal Treasurers Association, as well other associations that deal with um either treasurers or finance personnel in municipalities to see if there's a standard that's been created. Uh, and just throwing as an example, I know if we have a neighboring city, they had, was party to a lawsuit, had a lot of money. They had reserves that were, you know, five times their annual budget.
Oh, wow.
And it was like, uh, you know, at one point, you know, is, is enough. Now we can say, hey, let's go ahead and, I don't know, build a park, or let's go ahead and, and um start aggressively paying down some of our unfunded liabilities. So uh, I, you know, our life is kind of a policy, it's not a goal or aim.
Yep, we will definitely um get that information back to you.
I really appreciate that question, Councilmember Patterson, because, you know, you know, we're doing good. And like, at what point do we say, ah, we claim victory, and now we can start doing something and taking it back to the community and some, on some projects? Mayor Proton?
Yes, I um, I agree with the concept. I think we do need to set goals, and I, I do, I agree that we don't want to um, have so much money in, in our reserves that we fail to meet the needs of the residents. So um, I'm, I'm in favor of it as a concept, but I think it's a little premature. Um, I still, I still have a memory of five years ago when we were in a deficit. And it's taken us a long time to build these coffers. And I want to make sure that um, we're, we're solid and stable. So I, and with COVID, it's, it's a little unpredictable as to how much money we're going to have over the next two years. So I, I would like to, to, to do this as a very slow process. I would like for us to go ahead and plan to have um, to set these goals. But I would like for all of us, for us to be cautious and not put, not implement any policy right away. But wait and see how we fare financially over the next two years.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let you know that, uh, I don't know why, but I don't have my, my, the hand button over here, so that's what I'm, I'm waving.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I do agree uh uh about, you know, having goals, but at the same time, I also agree with Ms. Valentine. Because when you think about, for example, right now, what we got, what we have in reserve, uh, basically, uh, when you look at that, our expenses, like on a quarterly basis uh, of close to, close to twenty million to twenty million dollar, right? Uh, that one reserve is, will only, will only survive six months. So, so it doesn't mean that we have a lot of money in, in, in reserve right now. Now, uh, as my knowledge from the uh school board, uh, you know, the school district has to have a, uh, some percentage of, of, of reserve uh, lake or, or the and how to sustain your financial obligation. So when you look at right now to see the Hawthorne, people have to understand, you know, uh, uh, forty million dollars in reserve, it's nothing. Uh, because you can run out that money in six months, and then you'll be bankrupt, literally. So I, I do agree that we have to be very careful about when, what, talk about reserve and, and cash balance. Uh, because uh, we are not there. We don't have money to even to survive one year if it, if it was like a big crisis. So, uh.
Yeah, all those points, all those.
See, if even some, uh, League of Cities or even the state have some type of but, but just be careful about when we talk about the uh reserve, because it's not a lot of money right now. Thank you.
I'm.
All the points you're taking, the, the, the recommendations and the spending money, but to have a goal. So the goal is three hundred million, then whatever the goal is, right? Need to have a number that we're shooting for, at whatever.
Billion dollar, right?
You know, twenty-five trillion dollars, whatever the number is. Um, you know, five years of reserve, five years of, of revenues are, are expenses, whatever the number is, though. Uh, that, that's reasonable. I, you know, I just want us to have something that we, we know that we're pursuing. And then once we get to that, that number, we can have that conversation of, hey, we're at this number. Uh, what, what, what now?
Okay, thank you for bringing up that question. That was a great topic. Um, and great you're focusing, we're all focusing on that. Thank you for bringing it up. Whether to negotiate with consultant Christopher Beck to work on economic development for the city, Patterson, Montero, either one of you, go ahead.
Mister Montero, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Mister Patterson. Well, um, I, I, I thought about it because, uh, when you're thinking about that, uh, we um hire Mister Beck to, to guide us about the discussion about the mall, the potential developer at the mall uh, with the Charles Company. So uh, so those negotiations coming to an end, right, as of June first. I was wondering if we could still have uh Mister um Christopher Beck uh, in, uh, extend his contract a little bit uh for maybe another ninety days just to see if he can help us out with all those other storefronts that has been closed. Uh, like the hometown buffet, the ninety-nine cent store, all these other stores that has been empty uh, in our city, and even to look at some of those warehouses that are for lease or for sale to see if we can bring some other co- uh commercial business manufacturer into the city. Uh, so we want us to make sure that uh we have some economic you know, that the COVID is ending. Uh, we want, we want to support business to come to Hawthorne and government state, state level, the county uh, to build new business. So we should looking into those facility that are empty to bring manufacturing. Facility that are empty to bring manufacturing job, restaurant, uh, some other commercials. Uh, to our city. Uh, I think we need somebody that is out there lobbying for us. Because we don't have an economic development director. Uh, and we know our industry manager is very busy with the, you know, the daily operation. Uh, so I think we need somebody that is out there looking for investments to come to our city.
Okay, I'm gonna give it over to Councilmember Patterson, because uh, you're a co-sponsor of the item. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to. I just augment that. I don't, I don't know about having just a ninety-day term, but essentially. Uh, my thoughts are, I understand and talk, speaking with him that he has some relationships with other cities. And he essentially is their broker. Uh, I don't know the specifics of his agreements, but he, he's a, he's a real estate broker. He makes money by making deals happen. He earns money on. On commission, but I think he has the authority to, I guess, represent the city or speak on behalf of the city. Or to pursue businesses, um, that are in the city's best interest and help um. Bring them to projects in, in that, that respect city that he's in. So I think that's something that we should look into. Putting a, some relationship, not putting him on any kind of salary or retainer, but essentially giving. Create a formal relationship, so that he can um, you know, help to fill those empty spaces like the council member mentioned. And like, give him an opportunity to earn some type of commission for doing so. Um, you know, gives us an opportunity to have somebody in our corner who, uh, who knows businesses, who knows. Real estate, you know, who knows the process of bringing businesses to a particular neighborhood or particular city. Uh, and so, yep, that's just that.
Okay, um, I don't know who was first, Councilmember Montero, uh, uh. Ray is English or Mayor Proton? Who was first? Who want, who wants to go first? Okay, Councilmember Ray is English and then Mayor Proton, okay?
Thank you. Um, I know that we've discussed this in the past, um, some years ago. I don't know if it was. Uh, recent, within the time that I was gone, but um. I think ultimately, ul- ultimately, an economic development, um, individual, I'd like to ultimately see that. Go out, uh, for, you know, a department. Uh, in-house, someone that could, um, you know, um. Have economic development, uh. As a whole, but not just necessarily, you know, calling, calling potential, say, for instance, vendors. Uh, I should say vendors, but um, what do you call them? Uh, anchor stores or restaurants, et cetera. To, to fill space, but I think this should be an ongoing effort that the city has. Uh, with someone that's overseeing the economic development of our city and how that can ultimately benefit us. Um, so I'd like to see that go out some, uh, you know, to see if we could inquire on that position.
Well, I would see that, uh, he, or my thought would he be working with. Uh, whatever economic development director that the city ultimately did hire, you know, in a partnership and. Um, ideally create a relationship with him where it doesn't cost us any money on a regular, on a monthly basis.
Okay, uh, Mayor Proton?
Uh, yes, I, um, I'm interested in an economic development director. I think. Um, I brought this up many years ago, that we needed to have someone in that capacity. Someone whose job it is to bring businesses into the city. And also to um, to help the ones who are in the city expand and grow. So I am very much in favor of an economic development director. The reason we never hired one was because. It was always a budgetary issue. Um, I, I am, I would like to know, first of all, what experience Mr. Beck has in. Creating economic opportunities. I don't necessarily want to just hire him. Without having any information as to what experience he has had in doing this. I'm not opposed to hiring him. But I would like to, to know if he has ever done this before and what his experiences in helping cities. Um, build their economic development portfolio.
I know he does have a similar relationship, relationship with more than one other municipality. And did a, recently did a multimillion-dollar deal with a neighboring city. With, but I think that's a great idea to maybe ask him to come and discuss his credentials and. How he might be able to add value in this particular way. I, if he's even interested in this type of relationship, it's not something I've asked him. So, uh, I think.
Actually, yeah. Um, okay, I'd like to go next, and then uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, yeah, go ahead, Mayor. That's fine.
Okay, yeah, so no, I, I, I really. I mean, I'm, I, I know that everybody's talked about the economic development director and the economic development. Um, I'm kind of on the fence on that, but I know we, we have a majority of you guys who are interested in trying that out, so. Um, if, I would like to vet out Mr. Beck as well. I'm not too sure about him, uh, right now, going forward with that. Um, but I'd like to see like, an itemized list of different, different things that he's done. An itemized list, bullet points of all the different successes he's had. I mean, I'm pretty sure he could easily list those, or. Um, because the thing is, I, I know he's assisting us with this large investment. Which is the Hawthorne Mall site and its development. That's a large singular. Uh, one, one-off situation for us. But um, does he specialize in those large types of settings? Or is he able to do what we want him to achieve here, which is help us populate the different, the different boulevards, the different businesses? So it might be a different order of magnitude of what he is used to. So an interview process. And like, uh, as, as, as a. Much of an itemized list of what the successes are that he's had in the different cities. I'm pretty sure if he's interested in doing that for us. Um, he could do that for us, but like you said, you haven't contacted him yet. He hasn't been contacted, but it's an idea. I'm interested in seeing, uh, checking that out, see if that's a viability for us, but I'd like to see more before we even consider actually going ahead. But uh, Councilmember Montero, were you next?
I, I wanted to have, I, I had.
Go ahead, go back to you, because I know you're.
No, that, that's fine. I, I just wanted to say. Whatever we do, I, I don't want it to be, I don't want us to be hiring a permanent employee right away. Um, economic development directors uh, come in all shapes and sizes. Some of them are really, really good. Some of them are really not. Really bad. And what we don't want to do is to get into a situation where we hire someone as an employee. And then we wind up with, with not getting the value we thought we were going to get for, for the salary we pay. So I would like to see someone come in on a temporary basis, a ye- of six months, a year. To, to, to just try them out. Say if we can get somebody on a commission basis. Um, just to see how, how, how much value, uh, we can, we can achieve. And before we hire them permanently.
Uh, real quick, uh, Mayor Proton, so. When I saw this item, I thought it was a good item, um, to talk about this, and I think we could kill two birds with one stone. And depending if this person, this individual, Mr. Beck is a pro, is good for, a good fit for what we're looking for. I would think that the whole concept of an, in, uh, economic development director can be tried out with him.
Hmm.
By extending his contract of, of a few months. And to see how he develops and see what he's, see if, see what it looks like for us and development, you know? If that's what he wants to do, and if he can do that for us. And then we can see if that, uh, that the economic development cons, uh, director, concept or personnel. Will actually, will actually help, help us, you know, because you know, I've always been kind of on the fence about the whole thing. But I would like to see if maybe he can do the job and maybe he could give us some benefit. Uh, Councilmember Patterson, go ahead. What do you think about what I said?
I just want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we hire him as an employee at all. Uh, again, I'm not sure, as you said, if his area expertise would. Would play to smaller businesses, uh, if he wants to focus only on larger, uh, projects, but. And no, no means I'm not suggesting that we put him on a payroll or hire him even as an employee, but just develop a formal relationship. So he can, uh, pursue opportunities on our behalf. Uh, and let him earn a commission for doing so. But I think, first thing starts with maybe the city manager asking him. Uh, is he interested in, in a more ongoing relationship, what he would want that to look like, and then, of course, giving us an opportunity to. Understand his, his value in more detail. Just, you know, it's just some, this is, these are just my thoughts.
I think that's a great idea. This, like I said, you know, you heard what I said, so I, I'd be. Okay, so are we good?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, do you have a comment or something, or what?
Yeah, because I lost you guys from my computer, so now I'm on my phone. No, but, yeah, what, what I was saying is, because I know, uh, we're gonna have, uh. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Vaughn, but I think Vaughn have. Have schedule maybe to put in our budget for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. To hire, uh, an economic development director. So what I, what I would, I was agree a little, a bit with David. It was for us, you know, to, to keep, uh, Mr. Beck for a little while, since, since we brought him in. Uh, so, so, so we will not lose the opportunity to have those other stores that have been closed. Still out there for another, for another three months. So maybe he can start those negotiation. Uh, with some other developer that wants to come to Hawthorne, until, until we can hire somebody as of July first or down the road.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're all agreeing on that. Okay, so, uh. Staff, uh, Mr. City Manager, can you kind of tell us what that would look like? You know, being able to have a contract with the gentleman, and can you go ahead and contact him and ask if he's interested?
Yes, I will. I will contact Mr. Beck and see if he's interested and, uh. Speak to him regarding the conversation we had this evening regarding what his fees would be and options to retain the services.
What he can do first. Okay, thank you, Member, uh, Councilmember Patterson and, and Councilmember Montero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have item number thirty. Uh, I would like to just do the, uh. Is there a reason why we don't have the council member closeouts here? Mr. City Clerk, it's not listed on my agenda?
Um, it's listed on mine. That's strange.
What number is that? Thirty?
Thirty? It's the next item.
No, I know. It was highlighted red, so I'm so sorry. Item number thirty, elected officials report recommendations. City Treasurer?
Hello?
Hi, City Treasurer Fallon. Go ahead. What's your port, report?
Hey, guys, uh, good evening. Uh, look forward to being back in the council room. It's lonely in this, this uh, room all by myself. Um, yeah, one of the problems too, I've been, you know, thinking about is how low interest rates are in all this reserve Hawthorne has. And, you know, you're basically almost losing money in the limited amount we can invest in as a city, uh, with inflation and other things, so. I think, uh, who Councilmember Patterson was talking about having goals, it's also gonna help in making decisions on which, you know, investments to buy. Uh, but, you know, paying down debt seems like a great idea. Uh, versus buying, you know, different types of low-interest, uh, securities. Uh, and that's pretty much all I have to report, uh, for today. I'll look forward to seeing y'all hopefully in the, uh. The, uh, the council chambers next time. Cheers.
Uh, Mr. City Treasurer, could you be part of that conversation when we were talking about? You know, what our goals should be for you. So just be part of that conversation, just familiarize yourself. Talk to the City Finance Director and, uh, City Manager about that. Just kind of be in the mix on that conversation, please?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to thank everyone for watching from home, and those who called in to, uh, have their voices heard. I just have a few updates. So first, um, we held our first small fresh produce giveaway on Saturday. Within ninety minutes, we gave away seventy-five bags of fresh produce. So thank you to all the volunteers, everyone that came out. Uh, to Vaughn for his support and to the American Heart Association, who provided the produce. Uh, we'll be back in front of City Hall on Saturday, June fifth, from ten AM to twelve PM. Um, I want to thank the LA County Clerk's Office for inviting our office to present at the City Clerk Summit last week. To highlight some of the good things we're doing for our community. Uh, in regards to vaccines, if you haven't, please get vaccinated. Our city has made good progress. Uh, so let's keep it going. Seventy-six percent of our city's sixty-five plus population has been vaccinated. And fifty-five, fifty-four point three of our population, who is sixteen years old and above, has been vaccinated. Uh, for information on locations, to be vaccinated, go to vaccinate la county dot com. That's all on my end. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Andy is English? Did you have something in your mouth to eat? Did I do it again? I'm not doing it on purpose, okay? I promise. I just saw you first over on the screen.
I haven't eaten, so I'm trying to, to nibble on some chocolate, but anyway. Um. Uh, I want to just make mention that I'm working in collaboration, as you have, Mayor, with, um. Little Company of Mary, Vassik Polat. Not necessarily Vassik Polat Clinic, but it's, you know, all combined for vaccinations here in our city. Uh, like, uh, most communities and cities that are bringing vaccinations to their communities. I think this is important. I'll be receiving my second vaccination tomorrow morning. Um, as everybody knows, I've had COVID. It's a terrible thing to have. And, uh, thank God that, you know, I didn't have, uh, all those other. Uh, positioning of having to, you know, go to the hospital and all this other stuff, but it's not fun. But having said that, I appreciate everyone's efforts to address the vaccination needs. And what is best for your family and for yourself. Um, I think we had a great discussion, um, with regards to, um. You know, city law, state law, county law with regards to vending. Again, um, I have not necessarily anything against. Those that are trying to make ends meet to feed their families and be able to be a productive community member. However, it needs to be done the right way. And the right way to do that is to assure that you have the proper licensing, so that you're not ultimately cited. Or given a warning, so. Um, I think we're in the right direction. I look to staff to assure that, um, everyone is aware through education. And through, um, multiple resources, uh, multiple languages, including on our website. Um. A great event today that I participated in, and this is something I'll be bringing. Uh, to the council with regards to our safe parking. Uh, homeless, um, endeavors that we have here in our city. I think it's important that we continue to work on efforts to help, uh. Our, our unhoused individuals, and more importantly. Provide, uh, wraparound services, which include mental health, which includes, um, ultimately housing. And, uh, most importantly, assuring that everyone is being fed. So, um, these are all things that are important and great efforts that have taken place in the last. Few months by council members, by partnering with LA County to give away food. And, uh, be able to assure that families and little ones are not going without, so. I look forward to doing that again myself. Um, I am partnering and I will be bringing, uh, food. Uh, perishable and, um, non-perishable, and all of this is important. Um. The, uh, other thing I wanted to make mention. Oh, I just forgot. Anyhow, I want to thank all council staff, uh, everyone that works hard each and every day. Especially Kimberly in our housing department, to assure that our community that is applied for rental assistance. Is ultimately getting, um, the assistance that they need. I, I, I sympathize with individuals that are out there still not sure how they're gonna pay their rent. Um, or maybe not, uh, been able to qualify. Um, I really do believe that, um, our city can do a whole lot more with regards to helping families. Um, I know that the monies that we look forward to receiving from our federal government. Uh, could, could go in, in many, in many directions and many ways of assistance, and. This is why it's important. I believe that council members and all of us have, um, input, uh, and suggestions on how this money could be ultimately spent. But, um, more importantly, at the end of the day, it's, it doesn't, it seems like it's a lot, but it's not. Um, so I look forward to working with the council and, um, staff to bring some of those, um, needed services to Hawthorne and, um. I appreciate, um, the time that we took today, uh, on discussing matters that are important to us and important to those. Um, watching tonight, so thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to take some time to thank staff for your hard work. I want to thank the community. For taking some time out and paying, and just watching, paying attention, participating, making your voices heard. We, we definitely need that. Um. I know it can be kind of intimidating to, uh, speak to the council at a council meeting, but I want to encourage. Encourage you to do so and, and make sure that we understand your positions on, on all matters. Uh, a few things to staff, I want to make a couple requests. Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, could you, uh, coordinate with the. Finance Director, the City Treasurer, about, uh, presenting to the council our monthly fund balances. Uh, essentially letting us know on a monthly basis how much we have and. On hand, you know, what our cash balances are, and our quarterly investment report. Um, I'm not sure when the next one is due, but make sure we have that, that coming. And then working with the, the Finance Director with determining our cash management strategy. Which I think lends to what the City Treasurer had mentioned, which is that, you know, how, not just how much money. Which I think lends to what the City Treasurer had mentioned, which is that, you know, how not just how much money do we keep in um. Liquid form, how much we keep in in checking, how much we keep in saving, how much we're gonna put into a long-term plan, but how much are we gonna use today? Maybe even pay down debt or fund some other some other liabilities with some kind of cash management strategy. I made a request for all the contracts for outside councils. I'm still still waiting for that. And uh I would like uh some type of update and emails filed on. The recruitment efforts for other new s- the new city attorney, new city manager. And I know there's a whole process and we're reaching out to our firm and all that stuff, so I just want to update on, you know, how that's going. And uh and that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Montoro?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to take uh thanks to the public, you know, for for those comments, so so we are listened. And also thank for the staff, you know, because uh they're the one who make the city run. Uh and uh we have to thank. Our, you know, intercity manager and intercity uh city attorney uh for keep the business of Hawthorne going. I just want to remind our colleagues, you know, to give all your support to us. Intercity manager and our intercity attorney, uh because they have to do their their daily business of of Hawthorne. And and what we do other head departments to make the city run. Uh so uh please be reasonable on all of your requests from some others uh item that this. That is not those priorities. So keep that in mind because we want to make sure that um. Our staff and our special intercity manager and the city's uh intercity attorney that uh uh. Helping those other department run efficiency. Uh so please be reasonable. When you come to some other request that is not priority for our city. Um I want to say thank you to all of you because it was a great debate today. Uh for about uh our city issues, like Ms. English said, and about the uh street vendors. About our um campaign financial laws. Uh from uh economically developed, so uh so we want our city to be prosper and we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that happens. So thank you again to bring also that reserve. So reserve and cash balance is very important for us. Uh like Ms. Valentine said, that, you know, less than five years ago, you know, we were almost in a bankrupt. So uh thanks God that the the economy uh COVID didn't affect Hawthorne as some other cities. Uh so but we still have to maybe balance a a budget and make sure that we're running. Uh on on a green, right? That uh we have cash balance and reserve. That we can be able to at least sleep a little bit better. So thank you all the staff again for all your hard work and I have a good night.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Uh yes, I first want to add my um thanks to uh to the staff. Um especially to the City Manager and the City Attorney for all of their hard work. And I I take note that the that we received, I think, as as many as four legal confidentials from the City Attorney's Office. And I really thank them for all their hard work and all of which helped keep us help help us to do our job better. So thank you for that. Um last Sunday, I attended the the annual Cuban Festival at Jose Marti. Which um is really, they're really back to their their old uh their old selves in terms of of the the the. They just didn't have dancing. That's the one thing I missed, but it was, the attendance was was wonderful. It was well organized. They had a tent outside and the food was excellent as always. And um lots and lots of people, so the whole community turned out for that. And um I just want to thank the organizers for that uh for that festival. Um I want to comment on a couple of things that were said today and um by residents. So one resident came and and uh was talking about um. Possible pilot deviations where the pilots are not flying according to the flight plan. So we have a KHHR. Community Neighborhood Committee, which meets every three months to discuss possible noise impacts. Uh and 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 we also talk about flight deviations. We talk about that. We talk about um, we have residents who report what they've seen. And we also give our our residents information about all of, you you know, whatever they need to know. Um so that they can feel more comfortable about the operations at the airport. So. I'm going to encourage whoever has a concern about pilot deviations or noise impacts from the airport. To get in touch with uh our city manager. And he will get in touch with the airport manager to. Address any noise concerns or any pilot deviation concerns you have. So and and. And we investigate every violation. Every violation is investigated. Please try if you're going, if you have a complaint, to get the tail number of the aircraft. Um exactly what time and where you saw it, so that we can have a better idea of what uh what what uh. Regulation that air air that pilot may have been violating. The other thing I wanted to address is another citizen who came in and and wanted to talk about improving the mall. We hear you and we're on it. And we agree that we deserve to have businesses just like Redondo Beach and have the city look more welcoming. We too want to improve the mall with landscaping, walkways, all the things you mentioned. We're working on it. Please believe that. We are negotiating as we speak to make the mall a real destination for the city. And thank you, uh that was Mr. Royster. Thank you for bringing that uh that to our attention. That's all I have, Mayor.
Are there any go-banks? Okay, no go-banks. So um I hope you guys are all doing well out there, the community members and all the. Residents who have communicated to us individually, all those who are watching and all those who are out there in the community. I wanted, so I believe uh. I'm I'm glad that everybody was able to join us online here, uh communicate wherever you are, council members, you know, so. I really appreciate that and uh we got a good system going on here. A good uh a good well-oiled machine, I would say. And that well-oiled machine is supported by our staff and I'm really pleased that um. Today was evident and it has been evident uh that our staff uh is working together there. Um that they are extending support to our sin- interim city manager and interim city attorney. And uh the reports that were given today, the expert advice that was given today. Uh information from all our department heads and our attorneys and from our employees um is evident of that. So I'm very pleased. I believe we have something good going on right here. So um. And I've also received feedback from the community. Uh member like uh members from different areas of our community that they are happy with the way things are going right now. So. And that's a good, that's a good uh feedback. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, my council colleagues. Um I do believe we have the an LAX Advisory Committee and we do have an appointee to that committee. Um so I'm going to ask the City Manager and um staff. To contact that individual, whoever it is, research that. Um you can contact the City Clerks, most likely, Mr. City Manager. They'll have the name of that person on file and for them to come and give us a report. Um as to what the last meeting was and the last pieces of information were with regards to that. I mean, we are pointing them to that. We need to get a report, at least this a one-time report. I don't, I don't care. As long as they just let us know what's going on, right? We can't just appoint people, just let them go and do this stuff. And um I really appreciate uh our City Clerk uh for his operations there. Uh Ms. Carmen Avalos has joined, so congratulations to her and her ideas are coming forth. City Treasurer, Greg Fallon, just I appreciate what you're doing and I hope you didn't misinterpret what I was saying. Um I think uh. If if you could also give suggestions uh with regards to investment opportunities and your opinion. And what your analysis of our financial situation too. Um I would like for you to be part of that. We would like to see you uh come up and. Be part of those discussions, maybe some of the reports that are coming out of the Finance Department, okay? That that your uh your office is responsible for. Okay, so um. So uh feedback on the different things uh. Well, the big one was the the sidewalk vendors and uh. There's a process. We have permits. Nobody's saying no. Just get the permits, be in compliance. With the three areas, like we mentioned, city, municipal, county and state. As Councilmember Reyes English, and then you you go ahead and sell your wares or sell your food or whatever that is. This comes from a place where I've had at least two relatives that have passed away from food that has been uncooked. Not well cooked, and it's a possibility. Uh people die because they get worms in their brain. From food that is not cooked well, that it's not prepared correctly. That's a fact. So that's that's not imagined, okay? It might taste good out there. Uh but there's always a possibility that if it's not prepared correctly and it's not like a. You know, the right measures aren't taking place, people could get sick and possibly even pass away. So it's, that's why I was asking things about what's our liability and, you know, but I think it's our respons- responsibility. For for the residents, just to make sure that we're uh taking that extra measure, just to make sure everybody's safe. Uh that sounds reasonable, right? There's a process. Nobody says you can't do it. Just apply for the darn things, the application, you know? And and that's it. Okay, so, okay, so we do have a. We do have a a closed session. Uh Mr. City Clerk? Um okay, so what is the schedule? When is our let next meeting? I just wanted to double check. So our next meeting is we have one week, two weeks. Do we have?
Should be June eighth.
How many is, is, okay, so it's just basically two weeks between meetings, right? I thought it was gonna be a three-week thing, okay? So if there's ever any of our council colleagues uh that might be out on travel and might not be with us, make sure, try give it a, give it a shot, try to connect with us. Or we'll uh try to accommodate you in whatever manner we can with regards to the council meeting itself, okay? Are there any comments for the closed session?
No, we did not receive any comments.
Okay, uh I will now recess the City Council Meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to agenda. We are in recess. Called to order temporarily. It's called to order and we need to read an item into the agenda, item thirty one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In closed session tonight, the city council will meet to go on item number thirty one, which is conference with legal counsel existing litigation that is pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D one. In closed session, we do have Palmer versus City of Hawthorne, also described as case number two zero STCB four eight two two one. There is nothing further on this end, Mr. Mayor.
Were there any oral communications on this city clerk's office?
No, there were not.
Okay, I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess now, thank you.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus? People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician. We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
We have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people, two armed length. Just because you're at home.
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for twenty plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's forty million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the one in eight Californians, including the one in five children who are food insecure. At twenty-three million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. Thirteen eighty-three requires new rules and regulations to achieve a fifty percent reduction in organic waste disposal by twenty twenty, a seventy-five percent reduction by twenty twenty-five, and actions to make sure twenty percent of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in twenty sixteen. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
Thirteen eighty-three will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permit.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January one, twenty twenty-two.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for thirteen eighty-three implementation.
We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. Interim City Attorney, your report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council has given status of the case and there was no reportable action.
Okay, if there's nothing further from my council members and our staff, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-two. Thank you.